Today is August 13th, 2019. This is our August committee meeting. Norwood City School District Board of Education follows a bi-monthly meeting schedule. The first meeting of the month is called our committee meeting. At this meeting, we've discussed fully our agenda for the board meeting to be held the third Thursday of each month. As board members, we encourage you to attend, watch, and listen to our committee discussion resulting in action at the board meetings. For full disclosure, our committee meetings and board meetings are always announced, video and audio taped, as well as posted to our webpage for your view. All of our meetings are public and visitors are welcome. Mrs. Campfass, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Orson?
Present.
Mr. Atwood?
Present.
Ms. Ballard?
Here.
Mrs. Rayber?
Present.
Okay, please stand before the committee.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move into item three, which is discussion items, beginning with 3.01, construction updates.
Thank you, Madam President. We're excited to give you an update on construction. We'll begin with the middle school. Of course, as you know, I have here with me John Peter, who is managing all of this, as well as the start of the school year. We noticed this week that the trailer has been removed, and that's the Monarch trailer that is generally sitting on the band marchy practice field, or practice parking lot. And so that's been removed this week. And John has a few other things he wants to tell you about the middle school to bring it up to date.
Yes, thank you. Yes, as we've mentioned, the trailer has been removed, and with the bands returning from band camp Thursday, hopefully they can use it Friday at the practice area. All of the classrooms in the middle school have been released for our use, except rooms four, five, and six, the boys' and girls' gym, and a couple of restrooms. They did fire alarm testing. They started yesterday and they finished up this morning, and everything passed. So that is very good news. And I'd like to give a compliment to Scarlet Gray Cleaning Company that has been going through, as soon as Monarch has been releasing areas to us, they're getting in there and doing some resew up the hallways, get a fresh coat of wax on, and making the areas presentable. Would you like me to move straight into the Sharpsburg primary?
Well, I'm thinking about the boys' and girls' gym, too. We want to tell them that we're just finishing up some paintings, some conduit.
There's, I think all the conduit, the electrical conduit was finished up. I was in there today, and there was more painting to be done. They expect probably by the end of this week, hopefully they're totally done in that area. I know the cheerleaders have been anxious to get into the girls' gym for practice.
They are, and they're anxious for that.
So hopefully by the end of this week, we can get them in there.
John, can you speak to the extensiveness of the punch list? Or, you know, how much?
Well, Dave Regal and I went around this morning. There is quite a bit of a punch list to do. The majority of that is like some missing ceiling tiles where some work had been done above the ceiling, and they've got 98% of the ceiling put together, but you might have one or two tiles in a room that need to be put back in place. Some ceiling tiles have been scraped with moving furniture or something, so those will be replaced. There's a couple of rooms that have had some recent plaster repair work done, so they're going to get another coat of paint where the plaster needs paint. Other than that, it's a little bit of floor tile work, or baseboard here and there.
Attention to fine details, like some cabinetry that we had put in underneath behind that.
Mm-hmm.
It's the point where we think we can start looking at a date to plan our open house and our celebration.
Fantastic.
So I'll work with Mr. Miller on that. We had some ideas about connecting it with homecoming, so we'll just see, but we want to make that a fantastic celebration. So to turn our attention to Sharpsburg Century Construction, and when I say Sharpsburg, I'm talking about the primary building, that, shall I chuckle and say, construction says it's on time?
Like, they say they're on time.
They say it's on time. And it seems to be going very smoothly. I know Mr. Westendorf likes to say, even their messes are clean messes, that they're working very cleanly. It's very different than what we experienced last year, very different than what we experienced in our other construction projects, so. And they're very pleased. Couple of teachers, I think, have taken some peaks, and they're really excited to get in there. But first, we need to move into modulators. And so that is our challenge at this point in time. I will say, all of our appeals were given variance when we went to the state level, and so now we are waiting on permitting from the city. And to be very frank, that's the same permitting we've been asking for since April, but we have received variance from the state. So we were told today it may take another week.
Well, I think you said a week to 10 days.
To process that permit.
So it's regular days or business days?
It might be regular days.
Okay.
The other part to that, the other part to that is that, you know, we need those permits before we call for our fire alarm system to come in and be hooked up to the building. And that, when I talk about the modulators, the modulators will be hooked up to the building with regard to fire alarm system, and of course, for Duke Energy to get in and put their electric in there. So we're waiting on that permit. We did inform our parents today, or this evening, and Mr. Westendorf and his team have been working to this end to use Plan B for some time. We had a Plan C and Plan D, but we'll be using Plan B. And they think they can make it work certainly for, you know, two weeks, and so hopefully it's less than that. But then the challenge will be for, really make a way for our teachers to get in there and do the work that they want to do. So, and again, it's all temporary. Century remains on track, and they'll be moving out of the primary.
Ideally by Thanksgiving. They totally expect to be finished with the primary building by November 1st, and so they can deal with punch list items or whatever may come up. And they're going to give us several weeks of time to swap the occupancy over, so we're hoping to do that around Thanksgiving before they dive into the elementary side of the street there.
Right, because we got to give teachers some time to rearrange classrooms.
Right, and we'll be sensitive to that.
Okay.
And then speaking of sensitivity, I've spoken directly with Jerry Stoker from the city, and he says that they're in, they're doing everything they can to expedite our permit. So we're looking for that to happen very soon.
Okay.
Is that all we have for construction update?
I think that's all for construction. I would like to mention the grounds.
Yes, please do.
You may have noticed, some of the schools, we started with the administration building, I think it was either late May or early June, we kind of dressed up the flower bed there outside the administration building. We then moved over to the middle school and high school and dressed up the marquee signs over there, and the front islands, as well as some flower beds around the, I guess that would be the southwest corner of the high school. And then they've started moving back over to here at Williams Avenue Elementary just this week, and I think they've got this pretty much under control. So we're going to move back inside the building, get some more work done inside the buildings before they move outside again to Norwood View.
And when Sharpsburg construction is complete, we'll give their outside some attention as well.
Yes.
You also notice, since we're talking about grounds, we have some, a lovely welcome bench from the class of 2014.
I think it is, yes.
That you poured some cement so it can sit nicely outside of our athletic entrance at the high school. And then we have some decals with more of our branding, so that people know where to go to enter for athletic events. And then we will have a little bit more coming on, of branding on the high school front doors, so that people will know where to go for the high school front doors. It's appropriate for those buildings. We had it passed by our school resource officer, and we'll look for different kinds of branding, more frosted, more that is in keeping with the age of the building, the other buildings. And then we have some grand plans for the bridge that faces Sherman Avenue for branding there that will happen after school starts. The people in those buildings are really excited about that branding. So, giving a fresh look. I think that's all we have for you.
The one other thing I did want to mention, though, was the gym at Norwood View.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah. Towards the, well, much of last school year, we had areas on the gym floor where it was very, very soft. You could take a step and you'd feel like you're dropping an inch or two. Within the last week of school, I think in May, we actually found one section at mid-court over towards the bleacher side where somebody actually stepped, and I think, I don't think it was a student, and I think it was kind of, I'm going to say intentional, but not intentional, it wasn't an accident, but somebody stepped and they actually went through the floor. So we knew that it was time to tear that floor up. So we did, we tore it up in-house with our guys in late June or early July, I believe. And I made contact with a concrete company. Unfortunately, though, the guy that I had a plan in place to pour it, he called me about a week later after we had everything in place, and he said he had just been given some terminal diagnosis from his doctor, and he's timed, and the doctor, I think, even said, it's time to just take care of yourself and get your business in order. And so he called me back and he said, I'm going to have to turn this job down. So I was kind of stressing there in early July to find somebody that could do it. I did find another company, but he said he was very, very busy because of all the rain they got in June that backed up a lot of his projects, and he said he probably could not get to it until late August. So I do have him lined up, but there's a real good chance it may be happening while school is going on. What he's planning on doing is pouring a five-inch-thick concrete floor in the gym, and then after that's cured, we'll lay a new vinyl floor on top of that. So that's disappointing that it won't happen until after the kids are there. Hopefully, we can find a way to make it work, either second shift, or weekends, or something, so that it's not a huge disruption to the class day. But that is something that will be taking place after school starts.
John, what kind of floor was there before?
The floor before that was a wood floor with what they call sleepers underneath, which I just still refer to them as just joists, wood joists. And as we were tearing it up, there was just nothing left of the wood sleeper joists underneath. They were just crumbling as we would take a shovel and scoop it up.
Right, but the top surface wasn't wood?
The top surface was vinyl.
Was vinyl?
And that's what we're planning on going back with after the concrete floor is poured, so that you still have a little bit of padding. It was almost a good half-inch thick of vinyl padded floor.
It was padded vinyl?
Padded vinyl, yes.
Okay. All right, so when we go back with five inches of concrete, and are we going to put padded vinyl back over top of it?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I know for, you know, for youth basketball, if we're using that, padded vinyl is terrible for teaching kids how to dribble a basket. It just doesn't, the ball doesn't bounce right on padded vinyl.
I heard the same feedback, but they were also in that gym, so if that floor underneath wasn't supporting them, they wouldn't bounce right anyway.
It wouldn't bounce right. That's what happened. That's kind of how it all came about, is that there were what they call dead spots.
And there were a lot of dead spots.
With a solid foundation, we might have a much better shot at eveninging that out for those coaches. I heard the same feedback.
Well, I think even padded vinyl over top of concrete, you know, the absorption of that vinyl changes how the ball functions, because basketballs are meant to go over top of a hard surface, right? They require, they require that, you know, less absorption, because...
Would just typical tile, would typical tile?
Typical tile, yeah.
Be better?
Yeah. Yeah, something a little bit harder. I mean, you know, harder vinyl or wood?
I think it's important to understand why we need all the cement, is because there's a, quite a big step down at this point in time.
There is, yeah.
Which is quite insane.
Right.
Yeah. But I also think, if you had vinyl over concrete, I think if anybody falls, if you have at least that half-inch of vinyl, padded vinyl, I think you're...
That's kind of where I was thinking about that also. There's lots of spills in gyms, you know, I mean, that's just where accidents happen. So to have that vinyl padded is probably just a safety measure, I think. I would rather have that. And we're clear that a wood floor would be more expensive.
No, I understand a wood floor is more expensive. I mean, but if you think about what the function of that floor is going to be for, right? And not only is that gym used during the day for gym class, to keep, teach kids that function, it's also there in the evenings, especially in the fall and the winter months, for teaching youth basketball. I mean, I have personally coached in that gym and have struggled to get, teach kids. So you have to force the ball down so much harder, and then when they get off of that surface onto a regular surface, right? Then they're, I mean, you're bouncing the ball, you know, all, because they're not used, it's that, it's that big of a difference. And I even think going padded vinyl over top of concrete, I still think you're doing a disservice. The safety aspect of it, I mean, the difference between the safety aspect for, you know, a harder surface of vinyl versus the half-inch of the padded vinyl, I don't think you're really going to see that much of a difference on the safety aspect. I mean, look at other gym floors, right, that are wood floors that we have here in the district, and, you know, how many safety incidents do we have on those floors, right? There's very, very few. I don't, I don't think it's going to make that much of a difference. I'd rather see the floor be more functional, because I think, safety-wise, you're going to be probably the same regardless of what solution you go with.
Is there a reason that the wood was so, in such disrepair, or, you know, why, is there a moisture issue under the floor?
I think it was original, as we got, as we got down to the bare bottom of the sleepers, it was certainly because it was original. It was 100 years old, and it, not just the water damage from 2016, but the water damage from 100 years.
Hundred and years, right.
Yeah, so it had to go. There was no doubt about that. The concrete floor, it will be poured. We have not made any commitment to what we put on top of the concrete floor, if we want to re-look at that. I just feel that the vinyl on top of it just makes a little bit softer padding when you fall. It's like the paddings on your playset out on your, on the playgrounds, you know? Even though, yes, you're trying to cover for a fall from eight feet up on a, from a slide platform or something, but even if you're just walking around, and you trip and you fall, you're going to fall on blacktop as opposed to falling on a one- or two-inch padded surface.
Right, but that padded surface around a playground, I mean, it's not designed to have a ball bounced on it.
Well, we can check it out after the board, and if we want to change what we do, it's not too late to do that.
Okay.
Have you asked Mr. Murphy if he has a preference of what type of flooring?
I haven't.
He does.
He does.
He does. I would reach out to him.
We'll give that some more consideration. So I think that concludes our construction update.
I think so.
Thank you, John.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 3.02 in our discussion items is Montessori.
Yes, so last year, we developed a committee that met a number of times. Ms. Ballard served on that committee. We had a history teacher that teaches for us here, a director of curriculum, a director of special ed, also served, and we identified a few things, you know? When we consider the concept of, in addition to what we already do, adding Montessori as a viable option, you know, I considered the cost, the physical cost, and that would require teachers who are credentialed in Montessori, of which we don't have right now other than the one. And then it would require, of course, a classroom, and then to set up the classroom minimally is about $30,000 a classroom. And so when you consider also the reconstruction process that we're going through, and those funds cannot be used for such items, then I considered the five-year forecast that Ms. Campfass put out, and really, it's just not financially feasible for us to add on additional programming at this time. So at this time, I would not recommend that the district consider that as a viable option because of its inability to sustain.
I do have a question about the programming. I understand adding new classrooms at this time, it isn't exactly viable. I have gotten a lot of interest in, not necessarily, I know that Montessori tends to group itself by age as it progresses upward. One compromise that might be worth looking into going forward would be using our AMPM as sort of our split, so we could have the older kids who may not need naps and who need to be trained out of having naps during the day, be moved into the PM groups, because there's usually a waiting list for our AM group, and our PM group tends to be, you know, having space available. So we should structure that in a way that allows it to be more utilized by our students to allow more kids in that AM classroom who would benefit from it and in that younger group. And also, you would have those older kids in the afternoon starting to learn, okay, I don't necessarily need to take a nap during the school day, and then that way, when they go into their older grades, they're transitioned and used to not having a nap experience, because in the afternoon, they don't do a nap at all in the classroom. But those little kids, if they're in an afternoon group, they really need a nap, but they're not doing a nap.
Right.
So by splitting your ages into the AM and PM, you would eliminate that frustration for some of those parents to say, well, I can't go to the AM, or I can't go to the PM group, because my small child really does need that nap time. So if we split that up, make the space available in the AM group, then we can move those older kids into the PM group. Does that make sense?
I'm kind of confused about the nap, because I...
Okay, no, there's not a nap during the day for Montessori kiddos, because it's a half-day. Little kids go home after Montessori, it's why they structure it typically for a morning experience, so that then they can go home and take a nap. Older kids, who are going to be transitioning into a standard classroom, they're not going to be getting naps when they go into kindergarten and first grade, they're not going to have nap time. So having your older kids in the PM group starts training them, there is not a nap at 1:00 in the day. So that way, the parents who are, they're like, well, the morning class is full, but I really need my little one to have a nap at 1:00. I can't put them in the PM group. And then to the PM group, that leaves some spots open in the AM group for the younger students who do need to go home and have a nap at 1:00.
I would just say that, just having put kids through preschool, it really has to do with logistics. How can I get this child here, and this child here, and pick up, and less than, you know...
This was just some feedback I received, that they were, they were saying it would be helpful to some of the older kids to start transitioning them out of nap time, and it would also open up more slots in the morning group for younger kiddos who do need the nap.
I'm under the impression that for the Montessori program, both AM and PM are waitlisted, like that program's completely full. Are we...
Did we have just a couple slots in the afternoon still? I think so, not very many. Not very many, just a couple the other way. So I should, for those people who are listening, we have Montessori for preschool at Williams Avenue only.
Only.
We don't have space for it at Norwood View. Literally, we don't have physical space for it. And then we don't have space for it right now, certainly with reconstruction at Sharpsburg Primary. So it's off here at this building only. We don't offer it for kindergarten, first, second, and third grade. Which was essentially kind of, when we went into the researching and considering it, was kind of the thought, well, we could add on to what we have right now and add kindergarten for second and third grade and...
I never thought that. I wanted to add a kindergarten.
Perhaps, I mean, we were going, I was going high in the sky. Let's, let's, you know, if we're going to add Montessori, let's try to do as much as we can and...
For now, for budgeting, I was never predicting, because 1 through 3 is an entire, that's another group level in terms of Montessori learning. But pre and K can be lumped together, so for growth and affordability, for, from a starting off point, it seems to be the next logical step would be to grow our kindergarten. Once that grows, if we have the interest, then focus on a 1 through 3. But my first was never to go to full-on up to third grade, because we don't have the space or the finances available to do a program at that size. But again, the suggestion was brought to me that if we split the AM, PM, you're then preparing those older children who are about to go into kindergarten for being able to make it all afternoon without a nap. That was the thought.
So you're 3- and 4-year-olds?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Yep.
And our kindergarten, since we're speaking about that, is certainly full. I mean, it's not full, we're still accepting more, but it's where our numbers are growing.
Good.
So, we're excited about that, although that makes it very challenging, because you never know what those kindergarten numbers are going to be, and the staff that it requires.
Are those numbers growing evenly for the different elementaries? Or is one neighborhood growing faster than another? Or do we know?
You know, I had those numbers. I can pull them up. I was going to say, we've been staring at them for the past two weeks. We do the latest, that currently we have 31 students completely enrolled at Norwood View.
Okay.
For Sharpsburg Primary. So what we've... We have 40 completely enrolled, all their paperwork's in order, they're completely enrolled. And for Williams, we have 40. So there are still other students that are in mid-flight, so they've turned in some things, we're following up with them, we made lots of... Yeah, Mr. Crowe's been helping us with that in the past few days. Encourage them to come back in, finish that process.
Okay.
Reminding them that camp started this week, and that school starts next week, and we'd like for them to start on time and be on time. So those are strong numbers for this time of the year. We like the work, we'd like to know, we'd like to have everyone sign up before school starts, because it's really important for kids to be there on the very first day.
Right.
They miss a great deal when they wait too long. It's a good life lesson, too.
Do we have an updated district map, like where all our new kids are coming in from? I know the Allison split, but I haven't seen a map in a while for like where most of our kiddos are coming from into like Sharpsburg, into Williams, into View, like, I just haven't seen a map in quite some time. Do we have that information for where our new kiddos are coming from in the city?
You mean by street? Is that what you're really asking for?
Yeah, like, do we have, do we know where our kids are coming in and which elementary they're choosing? If construction's affecting that?
I think if you, if I remember, it's under street affidavit and central enrollment forms.
Okay.
And then it's just per, you know, the list of the street names, and it's, I think it's kind of geographically organized, I don't think it's alphabetical. You mean beyond kindergarten, is that really where it's more beyond kindergarten for students?
I mean, if there's a, the map layout for the, like, where our division took place after Allison, I have not seen. So I don't even know what, like, where that line is, where kids are supposed to go, versus where the kids are actually choosing to go. That's what I would like to see, with a map versus, I'd like to find out if...
So there are not that many intra-district enrollments?
Yeah.
For example, let's say I live in Williams District and I choose to go to Norwood View. So that requires special paperwork for a family to fill out, which I eventually approved. So there are not that many, I mean, I would say on a hand, less than this many intra-districts. So generally, our children are going in the, yeah, in the neighborhood schools, which is what we pride ourselves in, is our neighborhood schools.
I'm just looking...
Because everyone wants to be able to walk to school or drive by their school.
I'm looking to see, starting this year, because we're beginning our progress with the elementary portion of our district, to see if those numbers are going to change based on which building is being worked on at the time. If parents are choosing to say, I'd like to switch over, because...
Yeah, I'm not seeing that happening.
Okay, that's good.
I'm not seeing that happening.
Okay.
Now, after my voicemail today, those will happen, but...
It could be an interesting take if people choose to do that.
I mean, families really fall in love with their school and their teachers, and they know who the teachers are in kindergarten, first grade, second. They know who their siblings were that went before them, and it's, you know, they, they're committed to... It is, it is a family, so they're committed to that. But every now and then, I do get a request to go to a different school that is not in their neighborhood, and we review those all individually, but there are not very many of those.
Okay.
I would like to say, just because it seems to be appropriate at this time, and for the past several years, our state funding has been guaranteed funding, and we talk about it every time we talk about the forecast. And for years, it's been about 100 kids or more that we have to increase before we would no longer be guaranteed funding, we would be on the formula. That has changed as of House 866, we are now state, our state funding is all guaranteed funding, so regardless of how many more students we bring in this year or next year, our funding stays the same. And that's for every district in the state of Ohio. Educational funding is pretty much frozen.
So it's frozen, so whatever, until they come up with a new funding formula or some other, some other plan to do this, so we're stuck at the current funding level that we're at now.
Correct. Which is okay if we're shrinking, but not if we're growing. Right.
But that's another reason it's good for Oaks, is because if we're on a guarantee, that money is not taken away from us.
Hold on.
So that's good.
Hold on, so there is that, um, personal property tax. That is, that used to be like three million dollars worth of our budget, that is continually shrinking, that's still gonna continue to shrink. Right, that's not frozen, we're still gonna lose that money.
And we'll talk about that, um, in my update, I'll talk about that.
All right, that's fine, I just.
The governor did approve mental health, uh, dollars for public districts.
Right.
Can only be used for mental health improvements. Um, but not a lot of people are talking about that, well, it is, it's great that we've got that money, but we're still losing quite a bit of other money.
Okay. All right.
Which somewhat influences our next topic.
Well, before we get to the next topic, thank you for, um, taking our request about, um, looking at Montessori and really delving into it. And, um, and, you know, providing us that time to consider it, and, um, I think we're all. You know, we understand the decision and, and your recommendation, so.
Difficult.
Item three point zero three is open enrollment.
So over the past few months, we've reviewed all the schools in the state of Ohio that offer open enrollment, we've reviewed schools, school policies. And, um, I, I just wanna, I just wanna share that attendance at school is, is challenging. Um, getting students to arrive on time and to attend regularly is, is challenging. It's challenging for us, it's challenging for a number of school districts. And since achievement and attendance are so closely related, I think about open enrollment. And that would really cause our arms to reach even further, um, to students that perhaps might have. Uh, attendance challenges, you know, we don't provide transportation, so we wouldn't be going to get, get them. And we talked even here tonight about how much we love our neighborhood schools. Um, and so it's challenging to consider open enrollment, particularly with regard with what Ms. Camp House just shared. What will happen in the next two years? So if we did perhaps open up, open enrollment, it doesn't change much for us at all. And that was really, I think, our initiative in the beginning is, let's help change our financial outlook with regard to inviting students in. So then we come back to making sure everyone knows how great we are, and that we can get back perhaps some of the students. Who've selected private school, um, and gain their confidence back, so that they'll come back to us, or even consider public school as an option, a viable option. I think it will be something that we will have to continue to monitor, investigate, and hold as a discussion item. As we move forward, because we see how it could impact us financially, should things change.
And open enrollment is funded separately from our core funding that I was speaking about previously. So open enrollment is on a per-student basis, it's a lump sum. The thing that is so interesting to other districts about open enrollment is that. This, the, of course, the state share moves with the child to where they're going, to whatever school they're going via open enrollment. But the open enrollment is also taking the local share from the residential district and taking it to the district of attendance. And that's where that financial reward is coming from, by taking that local share. If we have a new funding, uh, system, which they're still talking about, improving, approving for maybe even next year. That could all change, that's where I, my. I would like to consider open enrollment for another year, because if they change that funding. It may not be as financially rewarding as we think it would be. So that's why I would like to wait another year and, and really look at that new funding, um, system that we discuss. Enrollment again.
Right, so the whole purpose of why we're discussing open enrollment is, is because as you look at our five-year forecast. You know, our, our overhead is extremely high. For the size of district that we are. And when you compare that to other districts that are in the same sized boat that we're in, right? Our cost per pupil or cost per square foot is, is a lot higher. So, you know, waiting another year is fine. But, you know, at the same time, if we're not going to, you know. Increase our enrollment through open enrollment, to make ourselves more efficient. At teaching young men and women, then we need to have a plan in place to address our overhead, which is currently. As of the five-year forecast, not sustainable.
I agree. I do agree, and, and maybe not wait another year, maybe wait three or four more months until we know a little bit more about. Are we gonna get a new funding, uh, mechanism? If not, then we consider it with the same economic benefits that's currently for open enrollment. I, I agree with you completely, we don't wanna lose our staff, we have great staff, we wanna keep them, we want more children. So that, so that our class sizes are small, are bigger, and, and we see a, a lesser amount.
We are committed to attrition, and that is as folks retire, um, that will not be replaced.
Well, and not to mention all the, the construction work that we're doing right now. Bringing in even more students in the middle of construction doesn't allow us to really focus on their learning. Situation and their, meeting their needs appropriately, if we're already, you know, doubling a classroom or moving kids around in and out of. Of trailers while we're doing that.
Tried to think about that, because, you know, you know, people say, oh, well, you're concerned about your demographic. A demographic would not change with open enrollment, and that's the expectation with regard to the law, so let's take that off of the table.
Right.
And then if it's, if we talk about, you know, we have too many special ed students, or you'll have to start another class. Open enrollment can't require you to do that.
Right.
Right.
To increase your staffing. So then we come back to what we're exactly talking about, is, does it, is the benefit really more? And I don't know that it's, it's that much of a benefit. But I do agree with you, we need to have other things in place.
So I just, to me, it just sounds like a great opportunity to kind of focus, and Sally, you had said this in just a personal conversation about. You know, just finding that thing that like makes people wanna be here, and it's happening already, but, you know, just. Shifting the focus to, well, let's just get kids here, to what is the thing that, you know, makes us.
Brings them here.
Brings them here, what's special, what do we have that no one else offers?
I wanna be an arts-designated, sports-designated, STEM-designated, variety-packed school that can give your kid everything. I don't want it to just be another, another school.
Those of us who are graduates, we know this all.
We know it.
Right.
Uh, my, my teachers are still my teachers, they are lifelong teachers to me, and I. You do not find that in other places, I feel incredibly privileged that. You know, I got to grow up in Norwood and have the teachers, the quality of the teachers that I have. You know, we had more than thirty teachers return here just for a luncheon. And, I mean, if you could have heard the conversation, they had such great experiences here. And they spoke about kids that they just, they, they, they remember their names and they talked with them, they played golf or they had lunch. Like, where do you find that kind of mentoring that is so rich and rewarding for them as much for this student? Um, and they wanna be on our campus, they love being in the high school library. Um, so I just, this is a special place, um, in some ways you wanna keep it a secret. And in other ways, we need our secret to be out, so that we can help more people, right?
Yeah, but, but, you know, all of that comes at a cost, right, that's all part of overhead. And you look at our forecast, it's, for the size that we are. We are way bigger than our britches can handle.
We do expect some retirements in the next two years, and I'm, I'm hoping that that's helpful, but, I don't know.
We, we will, we will stay focused on the attrition, and, and trying to get it right-sized, uh, without going through layoffs. We'll just, we're, we're gonna wait a couple more months to talk about it.
So the recommendation is just to hold off, just table this discussion, say, say till the first of the year?
Until they announce something.
Well, I mean, you know, that, that's probably gonna be, probably before they do their December break, right?
Well, they're gonna have the election too.
Because they'll be.
Well, I mean, we didn't know about the current state funding until two weeks ago, so.
It could be wild, we need to talk about it to get in January, I agree, that's a great time, even if we don't know anything about that funding.
Right.
We'll bring it up again, so it's fresh.
Yeah, because, because even if we don't know anything about a funding formula, we still have to figure out, like, if we're not, if it doesn't make sense to go open enrollment. Because the benefit just isn't there, we still have to right-size.
We do have to be careful about right-sizing too far, because one of the main things that people do love about our district is the smaller class sizes. So we have to be careful to find a balance in, in that formula.
I'm, I'm concerned about being financially sustainable.
And our average class size is very small.
Oh, I know, I just don't want it to push to the point where we end up, you know, twenty-three to twenty-six kids in a classroom. Which going from fifteen kids to twenty-six kids is a lot, and it will definitely throw off the, that. That bonus that we have in our parents saying, I've got a dedicated teacher at small class size, I, I really love it. You need to come here because it's, it's small dedicated rooms, and if we put too many kids in and we're not careful. We can lose some of those positive things in our column, those checkmarks need to stay there, we have to just find a balance.
We really work to, um, take a look at the state recommendation and follow that, particularly with kindergarten, um, those earlier years.
Oh, yeah.
Um, so we, we've tried to do that, but, you know, eleven, twelve, thirteen in the classroom is, is really small.
That's too good, yeah.
Probably not very healthy, so, um, yeah, we're, we're watching that too, and our offices are working closely on that. So.
All right, well, we'll continue that discussion in January.
Item four is the education committee report, and I have nothing to report, but I am certain that this will pick up once school starts again. Item five is personal superintendent recommendations.
I think that's a show, isn't it? At any rate, um, we have done lots of secretarial work with regard to accepting resignations, um, of recent. So you'll see one, two, three, four, five resignations there, as well as a childcare leave for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year.
So I kind of had the conversation with a number of people, um. I have let everybody know that I'm not gonna be at the board meeting next week, I am gonna be out of the country. But as, as this recommendation is currently written on the agenda, I would not support it.
The, the resignations?
Or, no, oh, the resignation, I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself, resignations are fine.
Now, these had already happened, we're just now getting them, because this is when our meeting is, correct? And most of these positions have already been filled?
Within the past week and a half, two weeks, so, um, you'll notice, um, two of them are. One kindergarten resignation and then one childcare leave in kindergarten, which impacted us greatly here at Williams.
But those have been, we have replacements hired.
Post for and replaced actually Friday and Monday, and we're really excited about our candidates. Um, feel good about them, and they were actually, they were here, well, they started right away. And so, um, yeah, they're very excited to, to be working with our students. And they had a successful day today, but that caused some things to happen late, um, very late for us.
Item five point zero two is employment.
So for number one, we had teacher contracts for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. Number two, uh, we have student assistant at, well, education, two educational aides. For number three, we have a typical, um, supplemental contract for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty for our finance, finance department. Um, number four, our sub-rate, and again, this is, um, an increase for our technology subs, it's the same as everyone else. We just realized that we forgot them, um, our technology subs, which essentially is one person right now. Um, and we hire that person usually in summertime to help with the heavy load. Um, number five, uh, corrections to the July second, twenty nineteen board meeting, so we had someone moving from a bachelor's to a master's. And then a resolution to hire non-certified coaches or advisors, that is number six. So you see a number of people there for the people activity contracts. Um, we have a band assistant director, and that really is, is marked, they started marching band. Um, musical folks, we're getting ready for our play that will happen in our air-conditioned auditorium this fall. Um, and then number seven, a correction from the June, the twentieth agenda. Moving from varsity assistant football to a varsity coordinator football. And that concludes my recommendations on your employment.
I do have a question for you, that's gonna be way easier than Brandon's thing. For the, for the, the musical that's upcoming, um, would that be a really good day slash evening to host our open house? Cause then it would also increase our ticket sales hopefully for those kids, for that show. Um, do it a couple hours ahead of the show.
Yeah, it might be, I'm trying to think of those dates right now, if they coordinate with anything else, but it might be.
Or even if we have two dates, cause not everybody may be able to make it, we could still do a secondary open house before the.
That's true.
Before the musical.
With the alumni, he wants, he wants lots of people to come back and see how beautiful the space is.
I know Adam would love to bring the silhouettes in for an open house, even have them perform on the steps before people go in. To the building, would be a really cool idea, have them do something right there on that big platform, would be kinda cool. Um, and as an introduction number kinda thing, and then open the doors and have folks walk in. Um, so even if the musical was happening, nobody would have to worry about messing with the stage or anything like that. Um, that might be something. If you ever want that, I'd be happy to reach out to Adam for it and help plan it, um, for, for a musical number.
Okay.
Or the alumni musical number.
I know, which one?
Both. So that was all.
We'll try to make it as grand as we possibly can, um. I know middle school folks are looking forward to being finished with construction, but they have really enjoyed the air conditioning. Because they remember what it's like when it's, once that building heats up, it's really, really warm. So, um. Yeah, lots of planning to do, for sure.
Yes. So I was a little bit ahead of myself a couple minutes ago, but. So some of these people activity contracts that are listed on here, I would not support. I won't be here to vote on it, cause I'll be out of the country, but I'm just letting everybody know my thoughts on this. Um, one of the other things that I noticed is that. Most of the things that we're voting on to approve now, these people are already in place working with our children. Before we've even approved, I had a huge issue with that, I had a huge issue with it last year. I know we discussed it, we discussed it then, and, and I hoped it would have been corrected. So, and, and moving forward, you know, we should be looking at our winter sports now.
And we are. And we are.
Right, I'd rather see winter sports now, and a lot of this should have been taken care of back in the spring. And not post positions at the very end of May, when everybody is leaving and going on summer vacation. I think that's part of the problem of why we didn't get people where we needed them to be. And we're settling for, for probably people that may not be the best for our district. So. That's my thought on that.
I, I think, um, when, when you're hiring supplementals, there's a lot of requirements they have to have. You, you know, because you, you've done it before, um, and so that slows us down a little bit. So what we need to do is make sure that those, the quality things that they have to do, the people activity certificate, all the CPRs, the DCIs. That all needs backed up.
Yep.
Because they're not coming to you until that's completed.
Correct.
As it's supposed to be.
Right.
So we just need to back that all back up a little bit, so we can get them on the agenda earlier.
And they should not have contact with their kids until they have that paperwork in place, and we have a chance to, you know, give our blessing.
Right.
Or not, so.
That's right, you're right, that's correct.
Can we make it easier for them to put their interest in, if they need to just take a CPR course over the summer? Or something that is something for them to get, say, hey, I'm interested in being a coach next season, I have this and this, but I'm missing this.
It's very.
It is, it is, and it's, and it's something that, some of those things you have to do every year.
And, and I get that, I'm just saying, is it something where we can at least reach out and say, hey, if you don't have this. We still want to know if you're interested in the position, so that we can help you get whatever those missing credentials are before we put you on our agenda.
It is offered to teachers first, and so, um, generally, for example, if there was, um, I'll use golf. If the golf coach this year says at the end of the season, yes, I'm still in for next year, but then tells you at perhaps a late date. I'm out, you know, things have changed with my family dynamics, I can't coach this year, then you're already behind the game.
Yeah, absolutely.
So is there a process by which it's rolled out to the staff, the staff doesn't, you know. There's no interest or whatever, and then it goes public, at which point does it go public? I mean, is there?
When he doesn't hear from staff, and he's, uh, Mr. Hines is.
Is there a second reach to say? Is there a second reach to say, hey, we still didn't find anyone?
Sometimes they'll repost. I know in one case they posted to Facebook.
Right.
Because they were really looking for someone.
Then we need to understand why staff members, because these supplementals are really designed for our staff.
They are, which is why the amount is given, you know, it's such a a rating.
Right. So if our staff members aren't taking advantage of these opportunities, we have to understand why they're not taking advantage of these opportunities. Right? So if if there's, if we're missing the boat on something, we need to understand what that is because that could be a simple correction on our part.
It it's it's not just us that sees that. It, you know, I think every district around teaching staff just aren't not as interested in supplementals as they used to be twenty years ago. I mean, when I was in school, everybody, all your supplementals were teachers and it's just, it's just not the same anymore.
I I just think it's a slippery slope when you have people that is not involved with our district that has has to deal with probably some sensitive information.
Yeah.
Right? Discipline issues, parent issues. I mean, this this is, this really puts everybody in.
Yeah, our students are best served by teachers, I believe.
They are.
Because the organization is designed that way.
Yeah.
So, okay.
But we don't want to discount, you know, we're still grateful that they're doing it.
Absolutely.
I think that message has to be given also.
Well, we appreciate our community folks who step up that are really, um many of them are outstanding human beings.
Yes.
I mean, Brandon, you volunteered for many years.
I did.
And you know, you play a really important role in those children's lives. I mean, they have good feelings about you when they see you out in the community. I mean, that's, I think it's important, you know, that's the village we talk about.
Right.
Great.
Right.
Yeah.
Helps to um to rear our children and be good examples of um high-quality individuals.
Okay, are we ready to move on?
Yes.
Okay. Item six, the Policy Committee. Brandon?
Thank you, Madam President. Um at this time, I have no policies to review, so that'll change.
Okay. How soon will that change?
Probably next month.
Okay. All right. Item seven point zero one, Buildings and Grounds Committee, is Debbie. Um can I can I just hold Debbie up to the microphone?
Thank you, Madam President. Um let me apologize. Um if I'm if I'm difficult to hear or I have technology issues, I would not be offended if somebody wants to um to read for me, but I will do my best unless I hear otherwise from you. So um we have, I'm sorry, what did somebody say?
Nope, you're okay. That was just a
Okay, sorry. Um so we have three requests for facility usage. Um we have Cincinnati State Technical College for a soccer game at the Shea Stadium Field Friday, August thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, from eleven A M. until four thirty P M. That's a Level E request. Um number two, we have Hydra Swimming, which is an outreach swim program. They're asking for the Norwood High School pool and locker rooms, September third through October twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen, and April sixth, twenty twenty, through July fifth, twenty twenty, uh various days and times. That's a Level E also. And number three, Norwood Debate Committee, the mayoral debate. They're requesting the Norwood High School mini auditorium and the Norwood High School atrium on Thursday, September fifth, two thousand nineteen, from six P M. to nine P M. And that is a Level C. Under the administrative content, um it's noted that our athletic director is in agreement with the request and that the booster would sell concessions, uh and that is for the uh the soccer game. And then uh number two, during the two time periods stated above, the request dates attack on Mondays through Fridays, four forty-five to eight, uh only seven forty-five on Friday and Saturday from ten forty-five until two thirty. Uh typically, sweeping requests like this will be conditionally granted with the understanding that during holidays and breaks, the school facilities generally will not be available. Our A D. is in agreement with this request and states that the times will not conflict with Norwood's swim season or the Norwood rec use of the high school pool. And then in terms of the mayoral debate, the candidate debate and the mini auditorium is to be filmed by Pace Television. And those three requests um for the facility use are attached for you to fill.
Thank you, Debbie.
Um one quick question. So for items number one and two, um are we being compensated for the use of the space?
Um it was my understanding that number two, I believe I was told, um there would be compensation. I have not heard about uh the the Cincinnati State Soccer Game.
So those are both Level E's, so that would be compensation. Okay.
Okay.
The way I understand it.
Debbie, did you hear that? As, okay.
All right. And then and then they have provided the required insurance?
I don't believe that they have shown that yet, but that would be a requirement for them to move forward and actually use the space.
Okay.
But are you talking about Hydra Swimming?
Correct.
Yes, I do not. I've not seen their documents.
Okay.
No. And I honestly am not sure that they're gonna like our amount because I think they wanted a not-for-profit amount.
Right.
So I don't know that they'll will in fact follow forward and use our space at the amount that we're offering.
Are they going to supply a certified lifeguard or are we going to be expected to do that?
No, they will have to do that.
They will have to do that.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Miss Camp House and I have talked. We'll need that for her records as well, that they express their insurance.
Yeah. And then the last question that I have for the mayoral debate, um I know there was some conversation about a concern for security.
Right. So I did um reach out to Dan and we just, we had a good conversation. He has talked to um is is it Sergeant Ruffini at this point? Lieutenant Ruffini? Rob Ruffini? Lieutenant Ruffini? Um a- at about having a police presence on site. I I don't know if that means that they're, they have someone allocated who they're paying to have there.
Okay.
Because as we know, that if they volunteer to come and they get called away, then
They have to leave.
Then they have to leave.
Yeah.
Um so I can um clear that up. I also talked with him just to let him know that we had heard that there may be another debate in the works. He had not heard about that. Um it seems to be around the same time, but but Mister Galligan is uh planning to move forward either way.
Okay.
Um and he said if anything changes, he'll let us know. So.
Does he have a commitment from all three of the candidates that will be there?
He does. Yes.
Good.
Um and then his other, as Brandon had let us know, he'd also talked about opening up the atrium to other candidates who maybe would like to come just for a meet and greet. We didn't talk too much about that.
Okay. I imagine they'll have literature that they'll want to share and that's different than sending home literature with children. And it's different if we were a polling place or that building was our polling place. Clearly, that some different expectations would apply. They were passing out literature, but I'm going to presume on that night they're going to pass out with some literature.
I would think so.
I would think so too. Yeah.
Okay, we'll move on to the Finance Committee. Mrs. Camp House.
Thank you, Madam President. July was a good month fiscally for the district. We received all of our tax settlement in July, which is early. History has it received in August and September. We will continue to request the tax advance as soon as possible to allow for peak interest earning for the district. That being said, our financials look amazing right now with that July revenue so high. Um our general fund balance is actually fifteen million, four hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. But please keep in mind that this is just timing. We won't receive any more tax revenue again until January. In addition to our increased revenues in July, we saw some savings in each line item of the budget. Again, this is timing. I have no indications that this is a trend. So um July looked good. August won't look so good. Need it with September because we won't have any more tax revenue coming in. While more information is trickling in from the state on new mental health funding for public schools, many questions are still not answered. We don't even know, for instance, if the new funding will be included on the forecast and the general fund yet. We expect funding to start in October or November, but that is not for sure either. I would like the board administration, staff, and especially taxpayers of Norwood City Schools to know that while we are appreciative of the additional funding for mental health, we need to acknowledge that education funding for public schools for the next two years is now frozen at last year's amounts. In fact, if we were to look at all state funding sources, Norwood State Funding has dropped by over one point five million dollars in the past four years, mostly due to the phase-out of tangible personal property. Reversements. While our expected increase for mental health funding this year is also about four hundred thousand dollars, it is now restricted to use and only used for for mental health. So forgive me if I'm not real excited about the new funding that we're getting this year. Uh we bought a new cafeteria van um over the summer. It's much smaller, much easier to use in pre- in preparation for having a true one cafeteria, central kitchen. This caf- this van will make it a lot easier for us to get those, um I can't think what they call them, those food serving, those things to keep your food hot, get that in the back of the van without having to get it into a larger, the larger van, the truck didn't have a lift gate, so it was dangerous. Our people were trying to lift these heavy, um I can't think what they're called.
Platters?
Yeah, there's another name for them, but um so I'm excited about the new van. It'll be much more efficient too. On the agenda, eight point oh one, our financial reports. Our monthly reports are attached for your review and approval next week. Both the middle school and Sharpsburg change order listings are also attached. Eight point oh two, temporary appropriations. Our expected budget for this year is attached. Eight point oh three, the uh appraisal contract for our Allison site, the engagement letter is attached for your review. Eight point oh four. Eight point oh four, special education contracts for next year are attached. If we get any other ones, we will certainly bring them back on the on the future agenda. Eight point oh five, the H C E S C Annual Service Contract. This contract details the services we receive annually from H C E S C. Services have not changed much at all. Norwood Ready Schools Kids Service Provider Agreements. These agreements detail the services provided for Norwood City Schools' youngest students. These services are paid are paid through local grants provided by our faithful business community members. Eight point oh seven, Capitol Conference. By next week, we will need to appoint a delegate and an alternate to the Capitol Conference. By next week, I would also like to know which board members would like to go to the Capitol Conference so that I can do the registration. I can always cancel registrations if something comes up in your schedule and you can't attend, and they will issue refunds for those. Um but they have date requirements on the registration.
How many would you like to send or can we send?
Anybody that would like to go to the O S B A Capitol Conference, I think is a um is a good idea unless the board has future uh further guidance on.
So last year we sent two. So Amber and I both went. I thought it was well worth attending.
I blocked the date since last year. I've got it on my calendar already. I'm happy to go back.
So I'm happy to have somebody else go.
I would love to go. I just don't know if I can be out of the classroom for, you know, it's so early in the year. I would really have to to see if that's something I'm able to do.
Yeah.
Sally, are you, do you have any, do you know, I I don't know if Sally really knows what the the Capitol Conference is, if you want to talk to her a little bit about that, Brandon or Amber?
It's a lot of workshops, like a lot of very knowledgeable folks from all over the state, um different levels, teachers, administrators, state official. I mean, anybody and everybody comes to this thing to educate on various topics. They have a huge vendor hall with all types of different resources and learning tools and apps and again, more than you could possibly see in a weekend. Um they have
Towards board members.
Yes. It's geared towards board members. Um but these folks come in and they focus on engaging students, working in your community, writing legislation or contacting legislatures, um STEM programs. The list is, i- it's stupid how long it is, but their their stuff is all online. If you want to look at what they're going to be presenting on and you can you can select your workshops that you want to attend. Um some of them are going to be super helpful towards what we're working on currently, maybe, you know, construction-related. When we were looking at Montessori, there might have been something that was helpful on that topic to help you educate. So if there's something that you're really interested in, you can you can gear your entire week to looking straight at those things.
Yeah, I could definitely, I'll have to look at my work schedule situation, but I might be able to make that work.
It's three days. Um it's typically Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday. Um and Sunday
It's November tenth through the twelfth.
We applied at the end of last year for a school that was performing that event. I don't know if they were selected.
Yeah, they have a student showcase, which is pretty cool. The kids all over the state come.
Hey Debbie, could you hear the this conversation about the Capitol Conference?
I can, yes.
Okay, so if that's something you're interested in, we will um look for that information from who we'd like to send next week.
There is a link. There's a link on our agenda that leads to the two thousand and nineteen conference. Has all kinds of details on there for board members.
So just follow that link, Debbie, if you're are, if you're in Board Docs under Administrative Contracts.
Okay.
All right.
No worries.
And then finally, eight point oh eight, Hamilton County Sheriff's School Resource Officer. This is the contract for our upcoming school year for our new S R O Officer Scott Brickett. And that is all I have for finance. And that is enough. Oh, no, I don't. I'm sorry. I have a purchase order. I have turned the page. I'm like, wait a minute.
I see eight point oh nine also fiscal agent not, okay.
Yes, I did.
Oh, it's kind of happened here.
Yes.
There we go.
Eight point oh nine, approve the release of funds to a new fiscal agent. Tobacco twenty-one and Interact for Health have requested that we release funds held at the district to a new fiscal agent, which is more aligned to their goals. I will have documentation for this transfer attached to the agenda as soon as I can. Um there are local grants, grant funds for tobacco restrictions and related age limit changes, and they do fit more appropriately with their new fiscal agent. Um so right now, I'm just doing the due diligence to make sure I have an invoice from Interact for Health who gave us the money to make sure that they know that I'm switching it. Um I'm going to get a contract. Remember, we had a co- a contract with Lauren Bart
Bartosik.
Bartosik. I need to get that uh a resignation from her on that. I'm hoping to have all that on the agenda for you in the next couple of days to review. And then once we can do that, we'll close down the funds and send the check to Interact for Health. Eight point one oh, purchase order over forty thousand. This purchase order is to Apex Learning for instructional software and courses. I've already approved it effective today's date so that we can get ready for the start of school. And that's it.
I do have an item before we turn. I know we're getting down to the wire with the start of the school and I keep asking about this, but I'd like to do our elementary assignments. So we can do that. Um just kind of hit the ground running with our buildings and
I think we missed that because we heavily discussed something else and we didn't end up talking about that. So um Debbie and Sally, we each, we talked about this a little bit, that each board member takes a school building um just to have contact with throughout the year, whether that's meeting with the principal or helping out at events um or by invitation, coming to, Brandon's gone to uh staff meetings or P T A meet, you know, whatever it is, just to have a little face time and kind of get some feedback um from the the individual buildings. So I, as it was last year, Tim had had gone, the board president had gone to the school that was under construction. So that puts us at Sharpsburg for this year. So I would prefer to take Sharpsburg if that's okay.
I'd be fine.
You know, just things to consider that we've got new principal at the high school. You know, just things to consider that we've got new principal at the high school, um.
I would, personally, I would love to see Brandon stay on at the high school since he did that last year with that transition, if possible. Oh, you did high school?
We switched.
Oh, that's right, go switched, okay.
I, I did the high school and after I went to the staff meeting, we.
Yeah, we just.
Oh, okay.
I, but I'm easy, I, I can go to any building, so I don't care.
So anybody else have a preference?
I mean, I would prefer View.
I'm, I'm fine with staying at Williams this year, I'm fine with staying where I'm at.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with whatever, my, my, my interest obviously are to be with the high school, but I'll, I'll do whatever.
I think it's good, and we had talked about this last time, was kind of getting out of your comfort zone where maybe. Where people don't know you and, and going to those buildings and making new connections. Um, so that might be something, I, I would like to see that, you know, you've done a year at Williams, maybe.
Wherever you want me. I can do the middle school if you like. And that way I can work more closely with Adam on working, i- if you want, if we wanna work with the, the open house kinda stuff, I'd be happy to do that.
So who do we have for Williams?
Um, no one yet.
Did you, I'm sorry, did you put me?
I didn't put, I didn't put anyone anywhere yet, so we have View, Williams and the high, well, you said View, but I would. I would, I would.
Do whatever, yeah.
I don't know what you think, but you're.
I like what you said about getting out of your comfort, comfort zone and people getting to know you. In, in other arenas, I think that's healthy and that's good. You know, we want people to get to know who you are. They just see you on camera and don't really know you, but I'd love for, you know, parents to get to know you and even, you know, if you tend. Um, events, um, I know our admin team is certainly excited to point you out in the crowd.
And, and Debbie and, and Sally, for you guys, I'm, you, you may or may not know, but I'm also a circus performer. So when you guys start planning out the elementary school carnivals and stuff, let me know. Cause I, I like coming to do face paint or balloons or stuff like that for the kids, um, so I'm happy to help you guys in that way.
Well, so.
If we totally shook it up.
So, we, we could say that I was at View because we switched, but I had scheduling issues every time I tried to go there. So I never actually made it to View.
Okay.
So, so staying at View is, is fun for me.
You never got there. So I would have myself at Sharpsburg, Brandon at View, um, Debbie at Williams, Amber at the middle school and Sally at the high school. Does that, does that work? But does that work for you Debbie?
Yeah, whatever.
Okay, and how we did it last time was just, we reached out to the, the principal and, and said, hey, let's. Let's just meet, sit down when you have time, um, that's how I started, I think.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to do it now, so before the things get kicked off and get crazy.
It's already crazy.
Before they get too crazy.
Personally, as a, as a teacher, to be out from school, it's already crazy. Okay, if we're good on that, then.
Can you say that one more time for my benefit?
Sharpsburg, Val, Norwood View, Brandon, Williams, Debbie, middle school, Amber, high school, Sally.
All right, it'd be nice if I just could get one of their. One of their smart cookies.
Hey, well, let's. What's the journey?
Sounds good to me.
I'll second. We gotta be more official than.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Orza?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole? Mrs. Raper? I know. Not officially, not.